Really, Kim?
I'd like to call to order Monday, November 4, 2024 at 7:00 PM. City Council Regular Meeting, all rise for... I can believe it. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the Republic, for which this stands, a nation, under God, indivisible,天地, and justice for all. Thank you. Today, we are online. We have Council President Tyler Miller and Counselor Jeanette Santiago. The four of us are present. I was looking for an approval of the agenda, but first, I'm thinking I would like to ask, if possible, that we move public comment, if we have any. We don't have any at this time, but to after our new business ordinance. Anybody interested in moving it to after ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, I can make a motion to adopt the agenda with the adaptation of moving public comment to after new business.
I have a motion to move public comment to after new business, number two, ordinance number 920. Any seconds?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Santiago. Any more discussion?
The reasoning.
Good. I was gonna say, I just feel, I feel like if there is any comments, we have a public, not a public hearing. We have that first reading of an ordinance on the agenda, and if there is any discussion, I would prefer to just have it after, after we've discussed this first. At this time, though, there is no public comment, and I can close public comment at this time and not, you know, and not change the agenda other than closing public comment. I do have a motion in a second. All those in favor state, or any more discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counsel President Miller.
Since we don't have any public comment at this time, but there may be public comment after we discuss the new business, I think it's within the public's interest to hold the public comment after we discuss.
Okay, thank you. Any more discussion? Seeing none, I'll take a vote. All those in favor state by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Close?
Aye.
You got that, Susan? Okay, so we're moving public comment to after business. That way, we can have public comment. Now, I'm looking for an approval of the amended agenda.
Is that approval of the agenda?
Approval of the agenda as amended.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended. Any second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Friends. Any discussion? All those in favor state by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Close? The motion carries. Now, we are on to the consent agenda, looking at October 21st, 2024, City Council Work Session Minutes and October 21st, 2024, City Council Meeting Minutes. So, I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Jacobs, an S, makes a motion to approve the consent agenda. Any seconds?
Second.
Second by Counselor Holmes. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Close? The motion carries. Okay, we are on to new business. Number two, ordinance 920, an ordinance relating to land use on remand from Luba, amending the scapu zoning map, adopting and implementing the hearings officer final order, and approving the Buxton Ranch Plan Development subdivision, conditional use, and sensitive lands development permits. We are on first reading, and Community Development Director Lori Oliver-Joseph with the staff report.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, tonight, I'm bringing forward ordinance 920 for first reading. As you know, the council had previously approved the Buxton Ranch application on December 19th, 2022. It was then appealed to Luba and to the Court of Appeals and eventually remanded back to the city on four distinct issues. The City Council on June 12th of this year did vote to delegate their decision-making authority on this application to a hearings officer to decide. And then, on September 30th, the hearings officer did hold a public hearing. There was written and public verbal testimony permitted. Daniel Kearns held that public hearing. He did consider the written and verbal arguments and testimony in regard to the four remanded issues. Hearings officer considered all testimony provided, weighed it against the criteria for approval in the Development Code, and also whether or not the arguments or testimony brought forward are actually relevant to the remanded issues at hand. On October 28th, the hearings officer issued a final order approving the Buxton Ranch application with the inclusion of 53 conditions of approval. The final order provides a summary of the local proceedings, description of the four distinct issues on remand, provides an analysis of the issues brought forward during that public testimony, and provides findings to support the approval of the consolidated application based on the applicable approval criteria that were in place at the time the application was submitted. So, again, while the City Council delegated the decision-making to a hearings officer, this does involve a plan development overlay to access a zone change on this parcel, and zone changes do require an ordinance to enact. This, at this point, because the hearings officer's decision needs to be implemented by a City Council via the adoption of an ordinance, this really is, is a formality at this point. By adopting this ordinance, the council will be adopting the final order and findings of the hearings officer as their own. This is appropriate, given that the council opted to delegate their decision-making authority to a hearings officer, and the hearings officer, again, is a land use subject matter expert. Again, it is appropriate. So, staff recommends that the council adopt ordinance 920, thereby approving the Buxton Ranch Consolidated Application, and accept the findings and conditions of approval as presented. And just overarching, obviously, we know there's been a lot of concern in terms of the public perception of the application. There has been substantial public involvement and opportunity for comment. At every point, those were vetted against the criteria in the Development Code that we must make our decisions on. So, at the end of the day, the final order does address the issues that were brought forward and contains Exhibit A as the full set of findings for approval based on our criteria. So, this would be the last step, is for the hearings officer's decision to be implemented via ordinance 920.
I meant to probably do this probably before, but I don't think, it was still fine. But I did, I think, Ashley, if you can help me too, is this a time to ask if anybody is tending to next? Okay?
Correct.
So, I can do that now before I read my statement? Okay? Whenever you say it's right. Is this my only, I'm not gonna ask about the expertise, but anybody wish to recuse themselves from this procedure? Do I do that at this time? Or do I do that after I read this other stuff?
I would recommend, I'm not sure exactly what document you have in front of you, Mayor, but I would recommend asking council members if they have any expertise contacts or potential appearance or conflicts of interest, any of those three items at this time.
First, first, okay. Public hearing for this application was held by a hearings officer on September 30th, 2024, which concluded the public comment period. The record is closed for this application, therefore, no comments are being considered in regard to the adoption of this ordinance. And council is the authority to approve ordinance, so tonight, I will read these questions, then I'll entertain a motion. First, I'll ask, does any counselor wish to declare any appearance of bias, expertise, contact, or conflict of interest regarding this matter?
Yes.
Counselor LeFrenz, what is your...
Yes. So, my home and property are in close proximity upstream of the proposed development, so this ordinance may result in a detriment to myself and property, so I've been advised to recuse myself.
Okay, so we have Counselor Friends recusing, so other, we don't need any other information on bias, expertise, recusing itself. Then, do we recommend that he leaves the meeting?
Yes.
Yeah.
If he is comfortable with that, then yes.
Yeah, if you're comfortable. I mean, you can listen at any time. Yes, but we do have an executive session and a meeting later, so we'll text you when we were gonna...
I can text you, Andrew.
Thank you. Does any other counselor wish to declare any appearance of bias, expertise, or conflict of interest?
Yep.
Counselor Jacobs?
So, I understand there could be actions or outside factors that could contribute to a possible appearance of bias in this matter. However, I do believe that I'm able to weigh all the facts and situation and determine that despite any potential appearance of bias, I can make a, I can render a neutral decision on this ordinance. With respect to expertise contacts, during the last course of the year that I've been a city counselor, I've had probably about two dozen individuals approach me at different points in time, inquiring on this project, and my position has remained fairly neutral, and thank you for providing your input. Please come to City Council and participate in the process, but unfortunately, I'm not able to go into any details on the matter. In terms of any conflict, perceived conflicts of interest, I live within a block distance of where this development will take place. I, you could argue either way, that it could financially benefit me with the new housing development, and you can argue that I will financially be negatively impacted by a new development. So, either way, there's a perception there. Whether it's real or not is simply just a perception.
Thank you. Any other counselors wish to declare?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Counsel President Miller.
So, during the course of this topic that's been going on now for quite some time, there has been a one-way expertise contact from Mr. Haugen to a number of council members, and I have been, I have received emails from him. However, I have not replied back to those emails.
Thank you. Counselor Holmes, you were saying?
Yes, I have received similar emails on the Friends of Flood Plane Distribution email list and asked multiple times to be removed from that list, but that was the extent of my communication. I also received a text message from Joel Haugen last week, encouraging me to abstain from voting tonight until a hydrology report could be completed. I do not think those expertise communications affect my ability to be impartial. I'll also note that I have a property that adjoins the property. I also don't believe that I have a financial benefit or detriment if that property were to be developed.
Thank you. Any other counselor? I will, I will, as same as Counselor Holmes and to-degree Counselor President Miller, I have received emails over the course of possibly the last year from Joel Haugen as a member of Friends of the Flood Plane. But I do believe that I can vote fairly on this topic. I do not believe there is any biasness. And Jeanette, are you still there?
Yes, I'm still here. I too have received the emails, but I am, there's no bias again for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Every counselor has spoken, so we'll move on. Does any party wish to challenge any council members' impartiality or legal capacity to participate in this matter? Okay. Seeing none, I will now entertain a motion on ordinance 920.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I move that council approve ordinance 920, thereby approving the Buxton Ranch Consolidated Application, SB 1-22, ZC 1-22, CU 1-22, SLDP 1-22, 2-22, 3-22, and 4-22, and accept the findings of the conditions of approval as presented.
We have a motion to approve ordinance 920, thereby approving the Buxton Ranch Consolidated Application, SB 1-22, CZ 1-22, CU 1-22, SLDP 1-22, 2-22, 3-22, and 4-22, and accept the findings and conditions of approval as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Mayor, I'll second.
Um, fine.
Well, you want that one, Jeanette? You were just in there first. Counselor Santiago, seconds?
Yes, thank you.
And being a first reading, I will now read the ordinance title for the first time. An ordinance relating to land use on remand from Luba, amending the scapu zoning map, adopting and implementing the hearings officer's final order, and approving the Buxton Ranch Plan Development subdivision, conditional use, and sensitive lands developments permits. We will now end, and we'll be back on November 14th for a second reading on the ordinance and a vote on the matter. Did we miss anything, Ashley? Are you okay?
Nope, that's everything. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, now, we back to public comments. If you want to text Andrew, give him some time, it'd be longer, but public comments, still any? Susan? Anybody online? Okay, we will close that. So, we are now on to the calendar. Not close to being done yet, but we'll go to the calendar. We are on November 4th, so on November 11th, Veterans Day, city offices closed. I believe there is a Veterans Dinner on Wednesday, November 13th, Veterans Lunch, I believe it's a high school. November 14th, EDC meeting at noon. November 18th, a URA meeting at 6:00 PM, followed by a council meeting at 7:00 PM. November 21st, Parks and Rec at 6:00 PM. Happy Thanksgiving, city offices closed, November 28th and 29th for Thanksgiving. Do any of you have anything to add to that, that I missed that's coming up? Now, we're on to updates. City Manager Ben Burgner?
Our new updates at this time.
At this time. Police Department interim Chief Llewellyn.
Hello, Council Mayor, Council President. Last week, we participated, or this week, participated with Halloween, any event reached out here at the City Hall. Next week, we have our Sergeant's Promotion Interview Process. We have some competitive candidates there. I'm very excited about being part of that, making sure and seeing the candidates next week, coming here as well. And tomorrow night, we'll have some officers available. Just trying to bottle a box, just to make sure that, of course, that's protecting the people, is able to execute their constitutional right to be able to vote. Going back, I know there's been some controversy about, you agree, but really looking at, going back, talking about the FLOC system, which is a license plate reader. I think it is something to re-investigate now with the current situations. I know this is used by a whole bunch of different law enforcement organizations, so I'll be having a meeting with the representatives here on Wednesday, just talk about it, get re-engaged. This is way farther down the line, but re-engage the council about something they're interested in, and the citizens too as well for that, so. But besides that, I've touched major, and any questions? That's all I have right now.
Thank you. We were at the LOC conference last week or two ago, and FLOC was there, and it was very interesting to see what they have. And like you said, there's many people out there to have it. It's not really probably well-spread out in Oregon, but if it is something that seems to work for us, it'd be nice to be one of those firsts to really test it and see, and maybe get some specials as a, they're trying to get into the state.
Yes, sir. I think they actually have, if I'm correct, or at least here, some type of system, I believe in Gresham area, I believe in some parts of Portland, I'm not too sure. Maybe not FLOC, but a system similar to that. But it'll take a lot, the financials, to get that stuff worked out, but I think it's something worth looking into again, and may re-engage in just to help out, not just with scapus, but with Highway 30 to be a major fourth, or do we have that? Something, once again, we'll have to engage with the citizens as well, too.
Thank you. Again, Counselor Jacobs?
Tomorrow's Election Day. Hope you voted. Super stoked. Yeah, just, uh, hope that we have peace and acceptance over the last, over the next couple days after the results of the election. And I may or may not be back, so see what happens.
Time to take a vacation after this. Thank you. Counselor LeFrenz?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Santiago?
I'd like to echo with Counselor Jacob in saying to everybody to be acceptance and peaceful and respectful of this election. And, and also, just to give a quick update on the EDC meeting last that I wasn't able to attend, but did observe in their recording, and they are discussing, having great conversation on, on their strategic plan, and if I had, if I wasn't feeling this way, I would tell you more, but I'll share with you guys individually later. But thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you. Counselor Holmes?
Yeah, just want to give a quick update on the 50-year plan. We got an update from NJ, the Planning Department. So, I think our last meeting was maybe August, and the staff continues to pour through the analysis of all of the many different reports that, that feed into the 50-year plan there. So, the expectation is that group will probably be considering some of those outputs and reconvene in January or February. So, we'll keep council updated. And then, also just want to echo, if you haven't yet gotten your ballots in, please do so. It is a very important duty that we all have, and I do appreciate that in scapus, where we might not see eye to eye on things. I think we realize we have more things in common than not most often, so please keep that in mind.
Thank you. Counselor Holmes? Counsel President Miller?
Same on the ballot. If you haven't voted yet, please get your ballot in. Your vote matters. I have attended the last several county commissioner meetings since our last meeting. They did counsel their, excuse me, counsel their last meeting, but there was nothing to know, any of those meetings that I think affect scapus. I also just want to add that regarding the Buxton Development Two, this has been a long, drawn-out process. I just want to thank staff for all their dedication and just, you know, professional standards and making sure that we abide by law and our ordinances, and this was a really, you know, tough thing to go through, so I just appreciate all staff's time. And, you know, we, we did encounter some pretty negative comments, and, and I really appreciate staff's time, the professionalism that staff demonstrated during this process.
Thank you, Counsel President Miller. I will echo everyone's on the vote one more day. I do want to thank Chief Llewellyn, last about a week or so ago, and City Manager Burgner. We had all six third-grade classes come through City Hall. They went through, which soon will be Whoville, but went through the museum, they came over here, they all wrote letters to the mayor and city, and so, we all got to read them. I'll each give one of you, but no, there's a lot of, they visited a couple parks, and what they wanted, what they saw at the park, what they need, what they liked to see, and they wrote nice letters, and we'll all take turns reading those over the next month or two. And when they came in here, Ben, we, we put up the board of all the parks, and they put noti, there's a lot more than just that, but they put what they wanted at the parks and what they would like to see, and obviously, zip line was the number one item that they all really wanted. One from up on Vista that goes all the way down to City would be nice.
Right.
And if not, at least in the trees, but no, zip line, so we'll get with Parks and Rec on that. But I really want to appreciate Chief, he took them through the police department and out to the cars, where they got to run the horns and the sirens and wear all the gear, and I barely could make it through my wife's class, and he had to go through six of them, so appreciate your help on that.
I'll get my hair back one day, it's all right.
Yeah. I owe you, so maybe, and so next Wednesday, or two Wednesdays, either. And I did go to a small city meeting in Rainier. We are hosting in February, so I needed to tell Carol and Susan, we're hosting first Friday in February, and they'll have a topic and everything, but we'll have to come up with a lunch. But we learned about the LEPC for emergency preparedness, so it will be good with the safety. Sir, I think that we can come together with some emergency preparedness stuff that would really help the city going forward. And with that, we are now going to go into executive session, ORS 192.660-2-D, which is pertaining to labor negotiations. Representatives of news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. Before you do leave, Joel, we may vote on something, so it may open up, and you can go back into online if you're interested, and there will be some open discussion after this executive session, but I don't know when it will start. We will, you can go online to our normal link, and you can get back into the open session. We will, normally, after executive, we've been done, we will probably reopen, so, you know. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of news medias are specifically directed not to report to any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made until executive session or in executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room, which where we will be discussing something after, not sure what, but we will open up at that time. So, meeting adjourned. So meeting adjourned.
...
Where you guys will take care of her and keep her happy and.
Thanks.
Do you have that? This is from the packet.
They're away.
Say it again.